Okay, all right, we'll start our meeting. If everyone could please stand and join us for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first order of business is public comments. Do we have any public comments this evening? Anyone like to make any public comments? Okay. All right, next we're going to move in and quickly continue an application for a transfer of an all alcohol package store license. And I will, I have to, in order to reopen the hearing, I have to read the public notice again, so I'll do that and then the hearing will be open. Notice is hereby given in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 138, as amended, that a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, November 5th, 2019, at 7:30 PM in room 201 of Maynard Town Building on the application for transfer of an all alcohol as a package store license from Maynard Spirits LLC, doing business as Mariah Liquors, 129 Main Street, Maynard, Mass., 01754; to Maynard Wine and Spirits, Inc., with DBA, Maynard Wine and Spirits, 4 Digital Way, Suite 3, Maynard, Mass., 01754. And here's a copy of the application on file in the office of the selectmen. So the hearing is now open, and there's a motion attached to the hearing, and it is a motion to approve the transfer of all, of an all alcohol as a package store license from Maynard Spirits LLC at 129 Main Street to Maynard Wine and Spirits, Inc., doing business as Maynard Wine and Spirits at 4 Digital Way, Suite 3, Maynard, Mass., 01754, with a new owner and manager, Mr. Joseph Seah.
Second.
Second, thank you. Okay, so, we now have the picture, floor plan.
It also came through by email.
Yeah, we have, yeah, so we have one in our packet, and there's another one for everybody that doesn't, in our emails today, they came through with a more formal, here it is. Mine had this in the packet, so.
Has it been added?
It's on the packet.
It's added, yeah. I opened it in the packet, it's at the bottom.
This one?
Yeah.
All right.
So I believe, I believe that was the one missing item that was holding us back from voting the last time. Does everybody have the same recollection?
Mm-hmm.
David?
What was your question?
I said, I said that this, I believe this was the one item that we did not have that was holding us back from voting for the last time.
And I, I think it's important going forward, you know, that we make sure that we have the material that we request, or otherwise the board can change our liquor regulations, but until such time, we need to.
So this is a public hearing. If anybody'd like to make a comment or have any comments in regards to this transfer of license, they can make them now. Okay, being no public comments, the motion is in play, so all those in favor of transfer of the license, none opposed, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We're excited to be part of the community.
And good luck. I make a motion to close the public hearing. It is 7:03.
Sorry if I gave you agita.
No, it's all right. It's good to cross our Ts and dot our Is too.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing? All right.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Look forward to being here.
Thank you, thanks.
Thanks Becky too.
You're welcome.
Thanks for.
Make sure we're organized.
Okay, so we have some minutes to approve, but before we can approve the minutes, we need to make a motion, I'll make a motion that we name, appoint Justine St. John as a temporary clerk until Melissa Levine-Pure returns.
Second.
All those in favor? You can vote for yourself.
Can I vote for myself?
Yeah, you can vote for yourself, yeah.
I didn't vote.
All right.
I didn't vote.
So you're now the clerk.
All right, you have to sign this.
Sign off, please. Okay, the first set of minutes to approve is, I'm gonna make a motion to accept and approve the meeting minutes of November 5th, 2019, as shown, for a second.
Second.
Okay. Any, any comments or questions, concerns about the minutes of November 5th? All those in favor? Thank you. Second set of minutes are executive session minutes, and those who are executive session from November 5th, and I also make a motion to accept and approve the November 5th, 2019 executive meeting minutes as shown, but not to be released, for a second.
Second.
We really can't discuss them, but if there's anything that would keep anybody from approving them, we'll have to, we'd have to go back into session to discuss that. So does anybody have any questions or concerns about the executive session minutes?
No.
All those in favor of accepting but not releasing? Okay, thank you.
So Becky, can I sign on the line that says?
Yes, yeah.
All right, next up is our correspondence items. Make a motion to accept the list of nine correspondence items, A through I, as presented, for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Alman. Any comments about the nine items, correspondence?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
The actuarial report from the retirement, are we planning on having the retirement report come in?
Yeah.
I feel like I haven't seen them less.
Over a year?
Yeah, well, I think it's been over a year, so I don't think I've seen them.
No, I've discussed it with Mike, and we'll invite them in.
Very cool. And then my other question is the Internet Essentials program that Comcast is offering?
Yeah.
Is there a way to get, is that something that is promoted to people that are, you know, that, that could use it?
I'm not sure. I got this notification, but I don't know how it gets disseminated to the public, I'm not sure.
Because it's basically just, they're expanding it to include all qualified low-income households in the area, so I just didn't know if there's a way to get that out there to people to let them know, take advantage of it, if they qualify.
Let me think about it, and see if I can come up with something. Yeah.
Speaking of Comcast, there's been a lot of complaints lately about Comcast's system going down, and I'm wondering, I know that we just renewed their contract, but I wonder if there's a way we can contact them and say, hey, is this just Maynard?
Of course.
So the question I have, Greg, other than that one, is it constantly a problem, typically a problem on Sunday mornings, for some reason, but.
Just in time for the football game.
It's usually like between six and, six and eight somewhere, the internet and that service goes out for four or five minutes at a time, but Green Star Herbal, we have this notice from the Cannabis Control Commission, and there is a requirement of some response from us within 60 days.
That's right.
So, we have that on.
I think working on it.
Huh?
Megan, I think, is on top of that.
Yeah, no, I'm just, can we just have a conversation about that as an agenda item?
Absolutely.
You know, before we send that in, and.
Absolutely.
Because I know that there were questions, all sorts of questions about both sides.
Okay, 100 percent. So, that 60-day notice though, I think it's been in training, so we haven't caught up on this, but that 60-day notice, I would like to be extended, because they had some, in the initial notice we got, there were some errors. So, but, but the Cannabis Control Commission, my understanding, has been very immediate to the response and provided a new notice, but that's, do we know the actual, is that 60-day notice? Do we know the actually when that is?
Um, I, you know, I didn't ask them to extend it, because I thought it could be discussed on the December 3rd meeting, and I've also spoken with the, the owners of, you know, that establishment, and I think if, you know, if it was gonna be on the agenda, they'd be able to come in and speak to the board, because I know you were looking for an update.
Yeah.
So, they could come in and kind of give an update, and then, yeah, this letter correspondence is, there was an inaccuracy in it, so I spoke with the Cannabis Control Commission to have them fix it, so that's why this isn't before you for your signature today.
Okay.
We just wanted to share it with you, because we did get it addressed to.
Yeah, I just, I just see that it's a, it's a 60-day.
And Megan.
60-day deal, we're coming on Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Year's, and all that.
Yeah, it's true, yeah.
And if we don't do our part by 60 days, we lose the right to do our part, and that's just the only.
Right, yeah, it's a good point.
Is there, is there any concern that there are issues with, because really all this does is tell them, if I understand it correctly, tell them that they're in compliance with our bylaws.
Yes.
Is there a concern?
So, the, the one problem that has been corrected, it's not corrected on this list, were the hours of operation. So the hours of operation that are on the very final page here are inaccurate, they're not.
She said eight to eight, right?
Yeah, they're not what the planning board approved.
Yeah.
The planning board approved hours, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and also, this board can also further restrict those hours, if you so choose, but we just wanted this application to reflect what the local, you know, boards have approved so far, so when I spoke with the Cannabis Control Commission, they made that update, so I have a new letter with those hours reflected, but that was the only issue.
And Megan did a nice job, she invited them to, to the EDC meetings, the last EDC meeting, and that was, that was a great opportunity to hear what, where they are in the process.
And remind me, board members, and, or anybody else, when we recently approved our marijuana regulations, did we have times in there for that?
You did not have times, but, but you're, but it left the ability for the board of selectmen to further restrict the hours.
Yeah.
To anything that you so choose, and I think probably the appropriate time to do that would be when they come before you for the license, but this is what we have in the books to date.
Okay.
So now, in this, this, this letter here, when we said it, send it back saying that they're in compliance so far, does that mean that the security plan and everything else has already been accepted, or is that, that comes after?
No, this is just for them to go back and get on the Cannabis Control Commission to get a provisional license, and then they can start to do work on the building and kind of move forward, and I think if they come back and they'll be able to give a more thorough update about their timeline, but this is really the first step, this is the first notification we've gotten from the Cannabis Control Commission from any of our, you know, host community agreement retailers, that basically just saying this has been completed, and did it, does it meet our, is it kind of what we signed up for, so with that one adjustment, I think we're on the same page.
Okay.
Our application process requires the security plan, amongst other conditions.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions on the other nine, other eight items? All those in favor? All right, thank you. Two items on the consent calendar tonight. Make a motion to accept and approve the list of two consent agenda items, A and B, as shown, for a second.
Second.
Thank you. So it's Christmas parade and winter and holiday parking enforcement, and some, renew all the same two policies as last year, policy and permit. Any conversation about the parking?
I'm glad we do it.
My comment would be, especially against this police officers here tonight, or those who are associated with the parade, thanks for continuing the tradition, given that we, you know, there was some doubt two years ago whether or not we'd continue, so thank you guys.
Fire department, too, me too.
And women.
The fire department.
Fire department, too, I understand, but there's none of them here, for whatever reason, I don't understand.
Well, thank, all right, so, all those in favor of the two consent items? We have a public hearing at 7:20.
Can we jump to the police chief? I can do the all-day licenses.
I'll do, I'll do the all-day licenses quicker, they'll be quicker than the other one, maybe. All right, so we're gonna just jump to agenda item number seven.
Will is here.
William, come along. Again, I'm not voting on these, so it'll be three people voting.
Hello.
Good evening.
It's back again.
Got a haircut, too.
Yes.
Probably shaved today, so, all right, we're gonna do them all at once.
Different, different look every time you stop in.
Right. Fun with facial hair.
All right, we're gonna go down, we're gonna do them all at once, correct? We can do them all at once, and the motion is to accept and approve the one-day licenses to William Doyle at the Sanctuary, 82 Main Street, Maynard, Mass., for the following dates and times. December 31st, 2019, a private year, New Year event, January 11th, 2020, NFL Division Round Playoff Game, January 12th, 2020, NFL Division Round Playoff Game, January 18th, 2020, birthday party, January 19th, 2020, Super Bowl Party, January 25th, 2020, Chinese New Year, February 8th, 2020, concert, and February 15th, 2020, a birthday party. All one-day events at 82 Main Street, and the police, fire, and building commissioners or chiefs all have no issues with the events as planned. Any questions?
The February 15th birthday party isn't delayed for Connor, is it?
Can't drink here.
Quick question, there was a whole issue about applying for a full license or whatever, is that on, off the table for the time being?
The, the law, we, we ended up having a talk with the head of the ABCC, and the, the law is, as long as I have applied for, and you guys have approved the one-day liquor licenses prior to my formal application, that I'm able to host these events.
Correct.
And so, at the last meeting we had, I had withdrawn my application so that we could get the, these, the licenses then and this week, and I will be tomorrow submitting my, assuming you approve, I will be submitting my full application.
Right, and they go through this all the time.
Yes, well, I'm going to quickly run out, so, yeah, yes, we have to, I just needed a break to find out when we could actually have that happen, so.
All right, any, any other questions about the one-days? All right, all those in favor?
Who seconded that? I'm sorry.
David?
I think David did.
You bringing in a big screen for the?
We will have the largest screen next to the movie theater for, for the event, so, yes.
Let's hope the right team.
We won't do anything small there, so thank you very much, I appreciate your continued support.
All right, thank you, Will.
See you tomorrow.
All right, all right, I'll just jump to number 11 now, which is the roof study contract, do we have, huh?
No.
It's, make a motion to approve an agreement with CBI Consulting, Incorporated, to provide design services and perform a roof study of Green Meadow Elementary School in the amount of $36,900. Do you have a second?
Second.
I can explain, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
So, per the direction of the board and the school committee, as chief hearing officer, I, I abide by procurement processes, procedures, I'm sorry, conducted a request for qualifications to get designer services to conduct a two-faced envelope study of the Green Meadow Elementary School, starting with the roof and then the remaining building envelope. I had four firms reply, and went through the evaluation process, the top-ranked firm was CBI Consulting, and then I moved into a fee negotiation period with them, this is the fee that they negotiated for, and it seems fair and reasonable, according to their reputation and the services they, they plan to offer. They do have a tight timeline, so they need to start working on this as soon as possible, and, but they, they were confident in their reply to me when I asked them how confident they would be in meeting that timeline.
Okay.
So I think it's, it seems fair. Funding, funding mechanism though, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I don't have a devoted funding source for studies, just because you can't plan for those things ahead of time generally, so we will have to pull from regular maintenance fund allocation for, for this study.
Does this, does this meet the requirements for reserve fund transfer?
Sure, it could, but that's generally at the end of the year, so we might be able to do, I could, I could take from my separate account now.
Can't you do reserve fund transfers throughout the year, at periodic times throughout the year with the finance committee?
We can, but I'd have to go to the finance committee to, to approve that.
Yeah.
But I, I need them to start work, so yes, we can do that now, but I would still need, yes, we can do that. My, my initial recommendation is to go through a maintenance fund, and then, and then backfill that maintenance fund, add it back with reserve fund transfer.
Oh, okay, that makes, that makes sense.
But it's all good questions, I mean, there's a couple of ways we can skin this cat, but I think, I think just, says roof study, roof maintenance, one for one.
Okay.
Okay.
All those in favor of the roof study? Thanks. Could someone remove her?
Sure.
How do you know it was coffee?
All right, do we, is there, is, are we just accepting the Green Community Report, or is there a report to be made?
So you have to approve it, as my understanding, and DBW Director Justin Marco is here, but it is 7:20 now this morning.
Yeah, my watch is slow, so all right. All right, so we have another hearing, it's 7:20 that we have to, a public hearing, publicly posted hearing that we have to get to first, and I will read the notice for that, and it's as required by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56, the Maynard Board of Selectmen will hold their annual fiscal year 2020 tax classification hearings on Tuesday, November 19th, 2019, at 7:20 PM in the Michael J. G. Norris Meeting Room, number 201 at the Maynard Town Hall Building. The purpose of the hearing is to determine the percentage of the local tax levy to be borne by each class of real property. The public is welcome to attend, and that hearing is now open. So, who is gonna present, begin their presentation? Good evening.
Good evening. Hello there.
Nice to see you, both.
Same here. Steve will be presenting tonight.
Okay, welcome.
Should be.
It's, it's not a microphone per se, it's a recording device for the television.
It's not a microphone.
Well, it's not a.
It's a microphone.
It's not an amplifier.
Doesn't he amplify for the room? Just because. Good.
Is it better if I use it, or no?
Yes.
People at home and.
Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to the town of Maynard fiscal year 2020 classification hearing. Okay, we do have some in-doubts, did this.
If anyone needs them.
Selectmen get them?
Yeah, we have copies.
We have them, but the audience, some.
The audience may want some.
Yeah, everybody want one?
Did you put a pile at the back?
Yeah.
I'll, I'll take it for Angie.
Anybody that wants one.
Well, I want to keep a couple, you take them.
Okay, I'd like to, I'm Steve Ponfert, I've been an assessor since 1982, I don't know whether my associates are here or not, is Tom here?
Yes, Tom and Rosalyn.
Tom, Barb, and, and Rosalyn Greenstein, and this is Angela Mamalama, she's our chief assessor, and she does most of the assessing in Maynard. Okay, the object to this meeting is to decide what portions of the taxes are going to be allocated to the different classifications. So, the taxes to be collected are actually, started, the process is starts back in January, actually, where the selectmen and the town administrator and all of the departments get together and decide basically how much money they're gonna spend for the fiscal year 2020. So that happened, and they came up with a budget, and determined the levy, really, that was have to be collected, so during that process, the Board of Assessors provides the town with an estimate of how much the levy can increase, and any new value, or new, new.
Growth.
New growth we're gonna have, so that, that comes into that process, then the assessors go off, and they, they determine the value of all of the property in Maynard, and that gets turned into Department of Revenue, and they determine the, what we call the residential factor, which is the maximum, the minimum amount that the residence class has to pay, and they also determine how much we can, we can cause the commercial, industrial, and personal property to pay extra if we choose. So there's a, there's a diagram on page, page five, that shows that process. We have quarterly tax billing, so you, you have to follow that path. Okay, and the amount that the town can bring in is governed by Proposition 2 and 1/2, which is the tax law, that says basically, the increase in taxes for the town as a whole can increase any more than 2 and 1/2 percent per year, there's two 2 and 1/2s in the 2 and 1/2, but the other 2 and 1/2 says that we can't bring in any more than 2 and 1/2 percent of the full and fair cash value of the entire town. So, then, the Department of Revenue tells us what the, what the minimum residential factor is, and that for this year is on page eight, which is 86.6032, and they share that the commercial, industrial, and personal property can exceed 13.3968, and I'm sure that doesn't mean a lot to everybody, so we'll get into the rest of that later. Okay, most of you have, are familiar with this, so I'm gonna keep moving along. If you have questions, or you wanna go back, let me know. Okay, so the, we also have three votes to take, basic, the, one is the residential exemption, and a residential exemption is a local option that authorizes by Mass. General Law, 559 Section C, which allows us to shift the burden within the residential class from owners of moderately valued residential property to owners of properties, to owners of vacation homes, and. homes. And we haven't done this in the past because we don't have many vacation homes. And it also can be used for, like, big tower buildings in Brookline and Chelsea. And so, it's used in communities like Tisbury and Nantucket. So, the assessors don't really believe it applies to Maynard. There's also the commercial exemption, which is Chapter 59, Section 51. And that is... Allows businesses that are occupied or owned by residents that are valued at less than $1 million and occupied by businesses with fewer than 10 employees. If adopted, it has the effect of reducing the property taxes in some commercial properties and shifting the taxes onto other commercial industrial properties. And then the total valuation of the commercial classes recaptured within the commercial slash industrial classes by calculating a new tax rate for those classes.
Steve, can I interrupt you on this particular topic, on the small business exemption? Unless we're going to have a general discussion about it later, I just have a couple of questions. First one that struck me is the legislation passed in 1994, yet it says there remain many unanswered questions about the effects of the exemption. It's been 25 years, and people don't know the answer?
That's right. It's really strange how it affects different communities, and they're still trying to figure it out. We did have a... We did have a citizens petition to a town meeting in which it was rejected by a narrow margin.
I think it actually was a tie vote. I think it literally was a tie vote.
Right. So, I personally was in favor of it, other people were not.
That leads to my next...
But the other thing is that it... In order to implement it, okay, we'd have to do some work. And to do it at this point in the taxing thing, it would take... It might cause us to delay getting the tax bills out, so...
So, I...
So, what I'm saying is, if you wanted to do that, I would suggest that you bring it up at town meeting or something next year, so that we would have some advance notice to be able to implement it.
Good. The same issue came up last year, and the question came up last year, and it was, we'll take some work or whatever. I guess shame on the board for not discussing it throughout the year as a possibility, but... The other... The next question that I wanted to ask was, in this particular page, on page 10, it says the exemption...
Page 9.
Well, page 10, same page you're on.
10.
Yeah.
Okay.
It says... Let me find it. "If accepted, the exemption would further burden some of the commercial properties and businesses." What's the extent of the burden that it would put on the other businesses? How can we...
Essentially...
Let me finish my comment, and then I'll let you give the explanation.
Mm-hmm.
My concern is that this thing, I believe, could potentially benefit the folks that we consider our neighbors, small business owners that live right in town, that have the business right in town, that are committed to Maynard because they're here. And we have an opportunity to give them a little bit of a break for bringing some business to our town. So, okay, let me consider that, because I want to try to help the people who live in town and have businesses that are here that meet these qualifications. What are my decisions made upon? And one of them is, well, by doing this, you may impact larger businesses. Well, I'm assuming that larger businesses probably can incur the expense. I don't know, because I don't know what the expense would be as a result of adopting the small business. But I do think that adopting the small business exemption would help those small businesses that I'm looking to help. So, I don't see any quantification other than words as to what this means. So, can you educate the board as to, maybe we're not going to be able to do it this year, because you say it's too much work to get it done by whatever date needs to be done, but what's the impact of this, rather than just skimming over it and saying, "We don't want it because we don't know about it. It's too many questions," et cetera. And I'm not trying to be, you know, aggressive about it. I'm trying to get an answer so that we can understand what this is all about. Because I don't think we understand what it's all about.
I don't even think the legislators know some of this stuff. But anyway, what it does is it shifts that burden from the local people who are in this business class to the others, okay, that don't qualify.
And what's the extent? If we were to shift that burden, what would be the relief given to those that get the burden shifted from them, and what would be the burden upon those that would inherit that shift? Because presumably, there's going to be a large number of businesses that inherit the shift from the small number of businesses that lose the little bit, that they're losing. I just want to know what the impact is.
But those businesses that don't qualify already pay a higher tax rate anyways in town. So, what we would be proposing is, we'd be proposing even more of a higher tax rate on all but 22 businesses in town.
Yes, but that gets to the crux of the question. What's the impact? If it's $50 on a... If it's, say, $500 for a small business that's on a margin versus shifting that $500 to a larger business that's not going to miss the $500 because they're such a larger business, what's the impact of this?
Depends on the rate and the value.
And, you know...
Tax amount.
And the other thing that I would be concerned about is the businesses that would leave town because of that. You know, a large business, just because it can sustain something, doesn't mean that it's going to want to.
Again, if it were millions of dollars, we don't know what the number is.
We don't know what the number is.
If it's millions of dollars, I would agree with you. If it's $25, I don't think I would agree with you.
Well, there's... I don't think there's a business... I don't think there's a business in town that has a tax bill of $25, so...
Obviously, I'm talking in small... In comparative numbers. I'm not talking about... My point is, if it's a small number relative to the size of the business, in a business that's on a margin, a small number can make a significant difference. If it's a small number... If it's a small number for a larger business, it doesn't even get noticed. I just don't think we understand. I think we're going to vote on something. We don't understand what the impact would be or wouldn't be. And you're assuming that somebody would leave town because it's a large number. Well, what's that large number? You don't know. Neither do I.
So, basically, the rest of the businesses in town who already pay a higher tax rate are going to have to then pay the tax rate of those 22 businesses. So, whatever those...
Not the entire tax rate.
Isn't it?
Not the entire.
The 10%.
You're not giving small businesses free tax.
If you go to 10% or 8% or 5%.
It's a percentage.
Isn't it a specific number?
Yeah, to David's point, the only thing that I think he's trying to say is that this is a summary report, so there's backup information to it, and how do you come up to this summary report? Like, what's the actual numbers that make that, you know, summary report? That's basically, I think, what you're trying to say, right?
Well, I'm trying to say, what's the impact?
What's the impact?
Okay. And Roz, you're shaking your head. You're a member of the Board of Assessors.
Well, I wonder if you could give us an assignment to go do the math and bring it to you in three months, and then have a real discovery.
Yeah.
We don't know. There's an issue with timing.
Right. Well, it can't work for this year.
I have given it in the past. Many years I've given it, and we still didn't vote on the exemption. So, I do have the spreadsheet. I can provide that, and I have in the past for many years. It was still a no vote. And just to simplify the process, because we do do this every year.
Yep.
The... It was determined by many boards of selectmen through the years that this would not be beneficial to Maynard.
But with all due respect, each year is a different board.
I can add that in.
And each year has different...
Yes, and each year it would be different.
Each year has different economic impacts.
Well, it has different tax rate, different percentage, different number of businesses. So, there isn't a set amount that they would get. You can't say that each person would save $500, and the other businesses would pick up $200.
I understand that. I just want to know what the...
Okay, so...
There must be an overall impact. If we were to take... Carve out those 22 businesses, however many there are, and find out what the impact would be, and would it benefit some businesses?
Yes, it would benefit some businesses.
Okay, so then...
Probably about 10 that would benefit.
Well, 10 is... If 10 businesses are going to go out of business as a result, you know, just to Justine's point, she thinks some businesses are going to run because they have to pay higher taxes.
I do think she has...
Some businesses are going to go out of business because they got to pay higher taxes, especially the smaller businesses that rely upon it for their life, so...
So, you...
You want me to provide it? I can provide it, moving forward.
So, today is November 19th.
I'm not looking. I'm sorry.
Today is November 19th. The next time we meet is December 3rd. Is December 3rd too late to finish this?
Yes, because we have to submit the recap to the Department of Revenue, and before we can do that, we have to have these votes taken.
That gets to a different point, too, but I don't want to go there.
So...
You don't want to not send tax bills out on...
No, no, no.
No, I don't.
I don't think that's what Chris is suggesting.
I'm not suggesting that. I'm just trying to avoid...
Big money if we get late tax bills. In the future.
All the back and forth. Let's... If we have the numbers somewhere where we can look at them quickly, we'll look at them quickly.
It's not going to change anything for this year, because apparently, there's a lot of...
I understand that, but, you know, if there's people that are asking... We seem to be asking for a number, and if there's a number that... The numbers exist. We can get them, and, you know, let's...
And it's not a number.
Not a number. It's a what-if type of question.
Our votes have been consistent year after year.
Right.
And if our votes have been consistent year after year, I don't know what would change them this evening, per se. What I'd like to know, to David's point, regardless of what we vote within the next couple of weeks, exactly what these amounts are. Because then we start the conversation, so you're not behind the eight ball when we vote to change this next time.
Yeah.
I don't want...
That's exactly the point.
Let's... You know, what... Our votes have been consistent on this, regardless of what the makeup of the board has been, for a lot of different reasons, a lot of different arguments, a lot of different nonsense, you know, in the back and forth of it all, between different people that got angry about it, some people got, you know, whatever, some people were insulted. Let's just do what we're going to do as far as the splits go, but let's get the process started now with conversations to the point, you know, what's the exercise? When do we want to schedule back to start the conversation of, here's what the split looks like, here's the business's impact, or the dollar amounts per business impacted, and let's go... Let's get it done in advance. We don't have to wait till November 19th every year, you know?
And that's the point, I think.
We can do it as quickly as we want, and I think quicker is better.
It doesn't give us enough time to have the conversation, as you're saying, to agree.
But if we're going to go...
I suggest...
If we're going to go back and forth, if we're going to vote the same split we vote every year, which is kind of what we've been doing, let's move along.
True, and I... Yeah, I get it.
I understand.
You're agreeing with me in any way.
I'm agreeing with you, but you're not going to get your numbers tonight.
No, I'm not, and I know that.
So, and we...
If you give us the questions, okay, we will get you the answers, okay?
Yeah.
But we got to have... We have to...
I do.
It's got to be like...
I understand.
You have to propose us.
The next thing is a list of questions, then I know the opportunity to answer them is probably not going to come this evening.
I never got them.
No, I know you didn't get them.
Because, well, you didn't get them.
Because we've only got this for a few days. We've started to digest this Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and some of us have had, you know, I have only one day that I haven't been in, at least two meetings in this building, and that includes Saturday and Sunday, was last Saturday, and like 16 days. So, I've been here a lot, and I just started to see this Thursday. So, the review process has not been as thorough as I would have liked for myself. But, you know, David has some questions, so let's see what the splits are going to be, what the suggested split is going to be. We'll vote on the splits, and then we'll get the numbers, and we'll do it, you know... I'm not going to say the right way, a correct way. Maybe there's a better way that alleviates some of the stress on everybody in the room if we start a little sooner, and we work, you know... We can work with you guys. We don't have to wait until the last minute and then hit in this room.
You don't have values until the last minute. It's just the way it works.
I know, but...
Are you indicating, Chris, that you're not going to take the vote tide for a small commercial exemption?
I'm not indicating... I'm saying, let's get the votes done, because we're going to vote, but let's then, to the point, let's, you know, we're going to vote a certain way because that's the way we voted.
Forever.
Every year, we vote the same, forever. So, let's do the forever vote, but let's see how we can work together with you, so when we come back next time, we all, and you are on the same page, and we have the same understanding of the numbers and who's affected and how they're affected.
I did have that in my packet for many years.
I know.
The last year and this year, or the first two years, I don't have that specific number in there.
I understand.
Mr. Chairman, we'll work on the schedule to heal it.
Okay. So...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move on.
Yes.
Sure.
Okay, page 11. On page 11, we have the different classifications of property, okay? The top one is 101, which is the residential single family. The 102s are the condos and miscellaneous, and these are all different classifications for properties that determine what class that property is going to be in. So, that's all submitted to the Department of Revenue.
Right, I don't want to interrupt. Go ahead.
Okay, page 12. On page 12, we have the estimated receipts that I mentioned earlier that the town uses to determine how much the town is going to bring in. And then there's the tax levy, which we're going to be dealing with tonight. And then there's the amount to be raised, which is the sum.
Can I ask just a question about the estimated receipts?
The sum of those two.
I mean, the estimated receipts, there's no way to really predict that, but it seems like they've gone up basically until this year, and they went back down. Any... There's really no way, no reason behind why that happened, correct?
A lot of that has to do with permitting, and because we have 129, a lot of extra money was collected for the permitting of all that.
In 2019.
And that was the higher number for that year.
So, it's artificially inflated. Got it.
Yes, there's an outlier.
Yeah. Thank you.
Took one of my questions, Justine. That's fine.
Sorry.
Although I would point out that the bar graph appears to be a little bit off, and that it shows this year's...
Higher.
Estimated receipts is higher.
Yeah.
I guess it's close.
I think that's...
I can use the eye.
Close enough, yeah. Close enough.
Bar graph.
It's okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, then there's the levy history, which shows the estimated receipts and the tax levy, and then the amount to be raised, which is the sum of the two. Okay, the next one is the debit exclusions. And Proposition 2 and 1/2 allows us to go over 2 and 1/2% if we have debit... Debt exclusion or a capital asset that we want to purchase. So, this chart at the bottom shows the amount of debt that we have currently on the books, which is, this year, it's $2,246,149. And so, it's been reducing. It goes down by something I had on another sheet. But anyway, the point is that if we come up with something that we have to borrow for an emergency or things like that, then it's expensive, because we not only have to pay the premiums for the... Or we have to pay the money back, but we also have to pay interest. And if you end up paying... we also have to pay interest. And if you pay, end up paying interest, typically at the end of over 20 years, you'll pay twice what it costs. So that's why we, we like to take and have, you know, a reserve fund and that sort of thing, so that when something comes up, we can pay cash for it and pay for it only once.
I'd like to make one comment, Steve, if I could, about the debt exclusion. This is really just a general comment to the ta, to the town and to anybody who is looking into debt exclusions or whatever. One, the middle line is school boilers. We're paying this year in fiscal year 20, 2020, $53,547 towards school boilers that have not been used since the high school was built. These were boilers that were put into the old high school. And the town, at the time, was promised that these boilers would be transferred over to any new building. Never happened. This is why it's so important for the community to listen to what's being told to them at the time that articles are being presented and whatever, and questions are asked about the validity of what's being said. Over the course of the last, you've listed five, what, 2015 through 2020, between $60,000 and $50,000 each year has been dedicated to boilers that we have not had one penny worth of benefit coming from. That's $300,000 worth of the taxpayers' money that has been thrown away with no value whatsoever. So the residents need to be considering what the future impact is when we vote to move things forward on debt exclusion.
I agree. Okay, page 14 is the valuation growth history, okay? Growth is new things that were not on the tax base before, such as new houses, new industry, new commercial property. And so you see that the first column there is the year, and then residential, you see that it went from $6 million to $25 million. Most of that was the 129 Parker Street, since we had a lot of residential housing over there. There were other things as well. Then there's the industrial property, or commercial property. That went from $622,000 to $163,000, so that went down. So what's happening here is basically there's been a movement of property from one class to another. The property that got developed, like 129, was industrial and commercial, and then that, a lot of that got moved over to residential. So then there's the industrial, and you'll see, since this is growth, okay, this is only the growth, there was no growth in the industrial sector. That's what those two zeros mean. And personal property, that went up quite a bit. And the total value and the total tax...
Where is that personal property coming from? What businesses are bringing that personal property in?
Yeah, you know, like cash registers.
Yeah, and I realize what it is, but why the $2 million jump? It's almost doubled this year. Where is that coming from? Where have we seen...
Personal property as well.
In what, industrial?
But it's, it's equipment inside.
Well, some of it...
I don't know them off the top of my head.
What's that?
I don't know them off the top of my head.
Some of it comes from...
We have about 300 accounts.
Some of it was electric companies and gas companies and stuff that put in new stuff, like the cell towers and things like that.
That's a, that's a significant jump, $2 million bucks, and I'm not questioning it, I'm just wondering where it comes from.
It's, it's...
Verizon, you know, Sprint.
It's growth, okay? It's not what the property is worth.
So like if Verizon does new wires or whatever, that considers personal property?
Poles and the wire, everything gets taxed.
Okay.
Even your router that they own that's in your house can get taxed.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions? The bottom shows how little industrial is at this point in terms of the growth, and so most of the growth came from the residential. So the next page, page 15, is the tax rate history. And you see that in 2019, the tax rate went down for residential and open space, and then the commercial, industrial, and personal property. Okay, so, but the thing to remember is although the rate went down, the tax bill probably went up, because we don't...
Values.
The, it depends on what the value of the property is, okay? So if the value of the property goes way up, and then the tax rate goes down, then they're probably going to, there's very few that have seen that where the actual bill went down. Then there's the split rate, which is very important for tonight. It's to determine whether or not we're going to have a flat tax rate, which would be the same for all classes, or whether we're going to have one for residential's and one for commercials. So we've, we've had a split for quite a few years now. So you can see that the rate for CIP there was 1048, went to 1050, and then the CIP went 132 to, it stayed the same. Well, actually, it was a small, small difference in, in between the 19... I'll show you more about that later. So of all the communities in the state, there are 113 that have the split.
114 in 19.
Yeah, 114. Yeah, I was reading the wrong column. You're right. Okay, page 16 is a look at the surrounding towns. So we compare Maynard to Stowe, to Concorde, to Acton, to Sudbury, Hudson, Whalen, Lincoln, and Boxborough. And of those towns, you'll see that Maynard has R and O rate, that's residential and open space, of 21.04 last year. And that was the highest out of the group.
Do we ever compare to towns that are not just around us, like that are more comparable as far as, like Littleton, Lunenburg, Air, like that type of thing?
It depends on what factors you're considering when you say compare.
Compare. I know, I know. Well, and I feel like...
You know, population, parcel size, you know, how many parcels?
Right, right, right.
Average income.
Yep.
There's a lot of factors that would play into what you'd want to be similar.
Compared to. Right, exactly, exactly. So I was just curious if, if, like, if this has just been the standard that we just, because again, only my second year, but this is just the standard of what we compare to every year.
It has been.
Okay.
I mean, I can add, like, if you know of some towns, Justine, that you want me to add to it, I can certainly do that.
Okay.
Some towns maybe we'll take out and add some more in.
Okay.
I would tend to agree that the, that the towns that we, that are comparable to us are, many of the ones that are on this comparable list are much higher income, so as a result, their, their, the assessed values of their homes are going to be astronomically higher typically than Maynard. Sudbury, for example, their average tax home, I mean, their average assessed value is way above Maynard's.
Yeah, that doesn't go by income though.
So the fact of what they have for a tax rate makes no difference for us, because they're, they're dragging in so much more money with one house that, that, you know...
That's true.
So it's, it makes no difference what their rate is. It shouldn't matter to us what their rate is, because it's the tax bill that matters at the end of the day anyway, and it's also, we're comparing apples to oranges.
Right. So we, you know, I mean, yeah, Maynard and Stowe isn't that much difference.
No, I agree with that.
Yeah, that's, that's a good comparison.
So we, we pay attention to that, too.
Other than the fact, I think we have a more, we have a more commercial base than even Stowe.
Right. There are differences, no doubt.
And Hudson's another good comparison.
So that's, that's to give you a little feel of where we are with reference to the rate. It's not the amount of taxes they're getting. So that's kind of depend on their value, just like you said.
Yep.
So page 27, how many needs percentage share, okay? This is a comparison of...
17, okay.
On page 17.
Yeah, that's okay. 17, not 27, but where are we?
Page 17.
17.
I was skipping to 27.
Okay, so this is the, if you look down on the bottom of that spreadsheet there, you'll see that the commercial and industrial percentage of the total, and if you have flat tax rate, is 8.9% of the town. And then that change was 6.96%. So it's CIP. Now, this, this chart is kind of upside down, where it's, it's the only chart that goes from the bottom up to go to 220. So on this year, it's 8.9 for, for the CIP, and 91.1 for the residential, in terms of what the town is composed of. Mostly residential at this point, 91%. Okay, and then at the bottom, we have the single family, the, the numbers of each of those two classes, two groups. Any questions on that?
Where would we see, for example, on the parcel count by property class, where would we see the impact of what was mentioned earlier, Parker Street?
Of Parker Street?
Relative to the parcel count. Would that count as only, I mean, do we count those individual units? Do we count them? How, how does that get counted? Is it in
Well, some of them are, are a mixture of, of both.
Because I see the number from 2019 for, well, obviously, those aren't single family.
Right.
Arguably, they're not multifamily, because it's, these are apartments. Condos went up by 10. Miscellaneous residential did not go up at all. Total residents went up by three.
They can land one down.
Where are they, where are we counting those, those Parker Street residences?
Well, Parker Street's clearly not the single family, okay?
Correct.
Multifamily. They're multifamilies.
They're the multi-family.
But the number didn't go up.
Because we counted them, they were created last year.
Last year, the number went down by three.
There's other changes within the class. That's not the only change that happens in a class of property.
Okay.
So sometimes you'll have, like...
You add and you take away, and you come up with a total.
And sometimes there's one parcel that has one building on it, and they're working on others, and we can't count those because they weren't done.
I guess I'm looking for an increase of 180 somewhere to...
Yeah, but we, they don't show up as separate parcels, and they, in...
They're not condos, they're apartments, so it's only going to show up as one.
That was my question. Okay.
Okay. Then we have the single family tax bill. Okay, this is an attempt to come up with a single family tax bill by taking the total value of the single family houses in Maynard and dividing it by the total value of that. So if we look on 2020 on the bottom, there, we'll see that it's, the assessed value of those properties was $1 billion 52,000.
No, 52 million.
908, no, thousand, rather, yeah. So it's billion, million...
$1 billion, 52 million, 908,400.
Right. And number of parcels ever included were 2,675. So the average value of a single family house in Maynard this year is $393,611. We don't know what the tax bill's going to be this year until we decide what factor we're going to use.
The last column, state rank, the state rank for our tax bill. Yes?
Yes. But question mark, you see there is...
I understand, yeah.
It's going to be this year. Okay, so the change last year was $312. You might want to remember that until you look at the summary at the end of recommended splits. Okay. So if we look at page 19, in the square at the top left, you'll see value of the residential properties, again, same as what we said in the previous page, $1 billion, 397,300,311. Three hundred and ninety-seven million, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five oh four. Okay, open space, we don't have any. They're not that's taxable, anyway. And then the commercial was sixty-five million, five eighty, forty-eight, forty. Industrial is listed there, and then personal property. So, then over on the right, it tells you what the CIP percentage is. That's the percentage of commercial and industrial and personal property is eight point three one two percent of Maynard. And the residentials are ninety-one. So, we put this information into a program that's provided by the Department of Revenue and based on the limits that they've determined. So, if you look at the first column on the left under the word shift, CIP shift, previously, we mentioned that you can't shift any more than, or make the CIP people pay any more than a hundred and percent, plus fifty percent of flat rate in taxes. Okay, then there's the, next column is the OSP. And since there isn't any, and then the businesses.
Basically, it gives you all the shifts.
If we, if we...
Every option.
Spreadsheet with all the shifts and options.
Yeah.
So, if we go to the next page from nineteen, you'll see continuation of this. Let me go back to twenty for a sec, I mean nineteen for a sec. If you look at the top of that sheet twenty, you'll see that the shift is one, okay? So, one means that all classes are paying the same. And there's no shift. Okay, and then it increments until you, on the next sheet on page twenty, you can come down to one point three...
On page twenty-two, we made it bigger so they can see it, summarize so they can
It's easy to see on twenty-two. But anyway, there is one point down in this column, which is the shift is one point five, okay? So, that, that says that we're shifting fifth, that the CIPs would be paying one, they would be paying fifty percent extra over what they would pay if it was a flat tax rate. And we can't go any further than that. Okay, so that's, that's the maximum shift that we're allowed this year. And then it shows the amounts that, the tax rates and and the amount of the total taxes that that group would pay. So, where's the next sheet?
That's our recommendation.
Which page is the recommendation or any one?
Yeah, page twenty-one is the...
Let's do the recommendation.
Is the recommendation, which is that one increment above what we had last year. All right, it's actually the one that we had two years ago.
We had one point three two.
We did, we did the same one.
And then one point three three for a couple of years.
Yeah.
So, if you go to page twenty-two, that gives you the impact of that choice, the rate choice, if you look down the rate choice, one point three one. Your single, your residential tax rate would be twenty dollars and sixty-four cents, and your commercial tax rate would be twenty-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents. And then your average tax bill would go up to eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirteen cents, with your average increase for a single family home of three hundred and seventy-two dollars and twenty cents. The previous year, you picked one point three two. I think for the last two years, it was one point three two. Prior to that, it was one point three three, for, I think, three years.
So... So, I, I, you could use the other sheet if you want to, or you could decide off of page twenty-one, twenty-two, rather, what you wanted to do.
Any suggestions?
I, I look, as always, at the average single family.
Yeah, me too.
Difference, bottom line. I'm very concerned for our residents, especially given the conversations that we had at our, our meeting last week, or whenever it was, and we talked about future needs, not only on the tax issues, but our water and sewer bills and everything else, that are all part of the picture. You know, we have these enterprise funds that we separated out, so we talk about tax rate, but in reality, the people paying the bill are paying their water and sewer rates too. So, I know everybody knows that. I see a close to four hundred dollar hit on a lot of people. We go to the comment that Justine made about people leaving, for business leaving for a tax increase, perhaps we'll see people leaving because of tax increases, and we don't want that. We also have, we also have the need to consider our seniors, and there's no special benefit for the seniors that is built into these taxes. So, they're taking this hit as well as anybody else. So, I'm very concerned. Now, whether, what my suggestion is, you know, I'm not objectionable to moving the, the split down slightly because, there we go, you know, that's what has been my goal for a long time, is to try to lower that split. I'm just very concerned about the overall impact. I'd like to also find out, if we do that, what the average tax benefit as a result of that point zero one decrease for, for commercial, what the average decrease will be for them and their bill? And will it make a substantive difference, as we were talking about before, relative to, you know, their value, based on your presentation, has gone down? So, they're already going to get the benefit of the decreased, the decreased assessment value. And if you decrease their tax rate, they get a double benefit. The rest, the rest of the residents are getting an increased rate, increased value, in effect, getting hit the opposite direction, something to think about.
Well, isn't it that the commercial, basically, there's less commercial property, so commercial property overall has gone down?
Yes, that's true.
But their commercial, their actual businesses are still valued on par with the rest of the town, right?
Yes, yeah, fair enough.
No, they're altogether, CIP, commercial, industrial, and personal property all get the same rate.
Okay, so, this is a public hearing, so if anybody has any comments, now would be the time.
Hi, my name's William Doyle, Henburn Street. I, full disclosure, I'm also a commercial property owner. The first thing I want to say is thank you to the Board of Assessors. Having been on the board for many years prior, I appreciate the amount of work that went into this. I did want to bring out a couple of things, right? As everybody knows, the amount of taxes that any individual, any resident pays, right, is a combination of multiple factors, many of which Steve covered in today's packet, right? The one thing that, Justine, you brought up, that I don't think people realize, is that it's not just about the numbers. It's not just about your valuation. It's not just about the proposition two and a half. It is also very much and largely dictated by the amount of commercial valuations as well. And this town, back in two thousand and eight, or at least prior to that, right, decided to go to a split rate. At one point, it was one point five whatever, and since then, we have seen a incredible decrease in the amount of commercial properties here. You talk about what if companies leave. They have been leaving. And if you go to page seventeen, and I wish this table, the one thing about this table is I wish it went back to two thousand and eight, like the table on, on page fifteen does. What you have seen is just since two thousand and fifteen, we have gone from a sixteen point two percent share of commercial all the way down to an eight point nine percent share, okay? That is a significant amount of taxes that commercial is not paying anymore, and the residents are picking it up. And while there is this, right, we went to a tax rate, a high split tax rate, in order to have commercial cover it, it has had the opposite effect. And every single one of you, and everybody in town, is worried about personal property taxes and what this is going to do, and how is it going to affect the elderly, and, and all of these aspects. And every year, this committee chooses to protect the, the residents by not acting, by reducing that tax rate. Yes, you do it one point at a time, right? That one point is a hundred dollars here, right, whatever. What you don't realize is that cumulatively, over the, since two thousand and eight, by your inaction to reduce it even more, you have actually increased the taxes of everybody. And by not acting, or by taking the recommendation that they have there, you are going to continue the error, which is, I'm going to protect people this year, but you're not. You say you're going to save them this amount of money, but you're not, because you're going to drive more commercial properties out of town, and they are going to pay more. And I can guarantee you, the amount that they are paying now, right, because of the inaction, is way more than the hundred or two hundred dollars that you think they're saving them on an annual basis, right, by taking this small step. Last year, the Board of Assessors made the decision to go and recommend a flat rate. That was a unanimous decision by the thing. And the reason why that was taken, right, and not taken before, was people are afraid of the ramifications. They are afraid that the recommendation is not going to be heard. It's not going to be taken because we have to protect people, right? The reality is, is that if we don't take an action, I'm not saying go with a flat tax rate. We knew you weren't going to take that last year, right? What we didn't expect is you would take no action, right? We thought that by pushing the envelope and telling you the way it should be, that we would at least make a larger progress than the point one that you guys have been approving every year. And instead, you took none. You completely, you know, baffled us. But by, if you, if you take this recommendation, you are going to continue to drive personal properties up, taxes up, because the commercial is going to leave.
So, what do you recommend, Will?
I recommend you take, well, I don't know, I haven't gone through the numbers exactly, but you should be taking a significance bet. If it's one point three two now, you should be going down to one point two two, at least. You should be doing something that, so that over the course of five years, we can actually get to a point where we are growing this economy again from a commercial perspective. That is the only way you are actually going to help the residents of Maynard from a long-term perspective.
Well, it's...
Thank you.
That's one opinion?
Thanks, Will.
That's an opinion. There's also, there's also doesn't, there's no, there's no consideration given in that particular opinion for the switch in some larger pieces of property in the community from commercial, industrial, into residential, which is going to change that number from ten point five to eight point nine and beyond. So, there's a lot of different changes. I'm just making a comment. I let you have your comments. We're set with that. But that's, that's an opinion. There's a lot of different opinions, and I don't know that anybody in the room or anybody in the community has ever done an accident review of a business and why they left here, or why they've taken a building and knocked it down. So, you know, that's just an opinion, that that's what's causing business to flee Maynard in such a staggering rate, which I really don't see. I mean, it was, it's so bad that you decided to put your own business in town.
I love this town. I'm paying those high taxes, right? What, what, if the numbers are in the report that show the decline, and they show how they relate to the tax rate.
Okay. Does anybody want to make a, a recommendation on the shift?
For the chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make one other comment, and that's...
What's that comment?
That if, one thing that happens is if commercial has a high rate, what it does is it tends to lower the value of the property over time. So, you know...
If it has a higher rate, it lowers the value of the property?
Right, over time, not, not, not in this, you know, we increase the rate here, it's not going to change their value today. But over time, what happens is it lowers the value of the property. Because, I mean, you know, the average commercial, they end up paying, what do we call it, three times, you know, they pay the taxes, the expenses and everything. So, if an investor takes a look at it and says, oh, they got a higher tax rate, you know, then they're not going to pay as much for that property. If the two properties, like, we had one enacted and one in Maynard, you know, they, that were exactly the same, if the taxes are higher, they're going to pay more for the money, more for the one with the lower taxes.
Okay. So, your recommendation, Angie, as a board and an assessor, is a one point three one split?
Yeah.
Correct? Okay. Since I've been pretty consistent in suggesting that we hire folks like you and our tax collector and our town treasurer and other people as our experts, I will recommend that we go with the split suggested by the assessor and the Board of Assessors at one point three one for two thousand and twenty.
Second?
Seconded by Justine. Any other discussion? Any other public comments before we vote? What do you, what do you need to know?
No, he's asking a question.
Oh, all right, so, could you, I'm not at that page, Angie, can you tell me, at one thirty-one, what the, the single rate?
Twenty, uh... Twenty sixty-four and twenty seven eighty-nine.
Residential, twenty dollars and sixty-four cents.
Twenty point six four is a single, single rate?
And for commercial, industrial, and personal property, it's twenty seven.
Twenty seven eighty-nine.
All right, so I make the motion that those three numbers be put into play? And if we have no further public comment, we will vote on that piece of it. All those in favor? Thank you. Next is the residential exemption. The Board of Assessors recommends a no vote on this. Recommend we vote no, make a motion that we vote no on the exemption.
Which one, the residential one?
Residential one.
Yes. Any conversation, any public comments about... Thank you. And finally, the small commercial exemption. Again, the assessors recommends a no vote. Recommend that we go with the assessors' vote of no.
Second?
Any, any public comments about the small commercial exemption? All those not in favor. Vote no vote. All those voting no.
What's going on? Oh, oh, favor of no?
Yeah.
Not no, no.
All those in favor of-
All those in favor of a no vote.
Same no.
You're not double negative, because then we'll have it.
I know, right?
So all those in favor of a no vote.
A no vote.
All those in favor of yes vote. So it doesn't change. Whatever it was this year, it is next year.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have-
Okay, go ahead.
I have the excess levy, based on the rate that you have just voted on, the 1.31, and I asked if you would sign it tonight, so we don't have to hold anything up.
Okay.
And that's the 1.31.
All right.
It's part of the recap that I'm going to be submitting tomorrow.
Okay. Gentlemen?
Thank you, Angie.
Okay, so I make a motion that we close the public hearing. A second?
Second.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing? Public hearing is now closed. It is seven, eight thirty-one. Okay.
Thank you both.
Thank you both very much. And, um, I don't know, we'll have to get to the, um, piece of business of figuring out what those numbers are before next year.
Yes.
So we can-
I can do that.
So we are all working together towards the end?
I will add that to the packet.
So we can just breeze right through this in about the 20 minutes it should take? All right.
Awesome. Thank you, Angie.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you all, and thank all your assessors for their, uh, time and effort and energy in the last several months and year.
They had, they also had to wait for the town meeting, right?
A good evening.
Yeah.
All right.
Working hard.
Yeah, Becky, take this. Please. All right. So, now, um-
So let's get on.
Now we're on, back to number nine, which is police chief. As of right now, we don't have a police chief.
We have number eight.
Number eight first.
It's eight.
Mr. Chairman, if you, you, town clerk said you wanted to meet with me.
Oh, okay, let's just meet the new town clerk.
Tom.
She's been waiting for you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Hello? Come on.
Come on down.
All right. Is everybody, this is our new town clerk.
Hi.
Hi, Michelle.
Michelle Jenkins?
Hi, Michelle, welcome.
Hi, thank you.
Welcome. Aren't you having fun?
Yes, very much. It's been a little busy, you know, going into a presidential year, so we got lots of nomination and petition, petition papers circulating.
Okay.
Excellent.
I read your, your comments in Greg's DA report, and I was like, this is very exciting.
Everyone.
I guess, I guess things in, in the clerk's office are really exciting.
Oh, I do love it. But everyone here has been great, very accepting and-
Expect anything different.
Very willing to help. Everyone's been very helpful.
So-
So, to, to also give her very much credit, first, we thank her for coming to, to Maynard.
Thank you.
She comes with a good amount of experience from other towns, so we're lucky to have her, I would say. She does have her work cut out for her. She's trying to do the best she can without, you know, kind of on her own in there, but, but town staff has been helping her where again. She also is trying to set new templates and procedures for the office, which I think is very much called for and welcomed by my office and I think the community at large. But I ask for everyone's patience as Michelle tries to figure out what those new procedures may be and, and what those templates may be. But I look very much forward to the work that she'll provide and the, and the progress she'll give to Town Hall.
Good luck and welcome.
Yeah, good luck.
Thank you.
I hope to stop in and say hello sometime.
Just want to thank you for choosing us to, um, be where you settle. And your, um, absolutely, your presence at the special town meeting prior to you actually coming on board was noticed, greatly appreciated, and kind of sets a tone for the, the way your office is, is going to run, and we appreciate it. So we look forward to working with you. We thank you for coming in to meet with us and, uh, welcome.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
See you soon.
Thanks, Michelle.
Okay. We sang happy birthday, most of the other stuff. What's next, boys? What do you want to do next?
What do you think?
What should we do? What should Maynard do next? Find a new police chief?
You two? You guys want to be? That's it. From good hands.
I don't know, one of you two threatened to dead me in the middle of Powder Mill Road one day, so I'm not going to allow that.
You deserve it, no?
Anyway, so Greg, want to just walk us through-
Oh, Mr. Chairman.
... the discussion? And Mike, if you want to come up and sit?
So, Mr. Chairman, um, it's, it's, with certain bittersweet, you know, we, we did accept the resignation from Police Chief Mark Dubois, as he was hired by the town of Braintree and, and submitted his resignation effective last Friday at the 15th. So right now, the police department has no chief. I stalling recommend that this board, as the appointing authority for the police department, appoint a police chief. My recommendation is to have Lieutenant Mike Noble fill that position. It is up to the board as to make him the chief, which is my recommendation. Alternatively, the board may, may appoint an acting chief, which I would also recommend to be Lieutenant Mike Noble in this case.
Okay.
There are other alternatives to go through a search process, but I believe that due to Mike's experience and reputation and character, that he is my top candidate.
Okay. Okay. I can just say that I will not vote. We've, I've talked to Greg, and we've talked to council, and the nature of my relationship with Mike and Mike's family mean that I won't be voting, but I will be part of the discussion. That being said, I've had the pleasure over the last several years to be a liaison to the police department and had a great deal of contact with Chief Dubois. I've traveled with both him and Mike to several different, um, police meetings across the state and ceremonies where the town of Maynard and Mike have been recognized for their accreditation and some of the other milestones that Maynard's police department has reached over the last several years. And so I know, you know, a little bit about the police department and where we're at, and I wholeheartedly agree with Greg, and I think that Mike Noble is the person to lead our police departments, the best person to lead our police departments. He's shown that in any number of different ways. He's been our acting chief for a great portion of the last several years, as Chief Dubois has, you know, traveled extensively for his different other commitments, military and otherwise. And Mike has always been there to support the town and give the town what it needs and as far, as so far as leadership in the police departments. That would be my recommendation, and I'd like to hear what the rest of us have to say.
No, I would totally agree. I think that, first off, my respect for Chief Dubois and my conversations with him, not that I would have expected him to say, not that I would have expected something different from him based on what I know about Mike, was his complete support from Mike for this position. And, you know, I've had the pleasure now of being on the board with two different police chiefs and, you know, seeing different styles and whatever. And to, I think Mike will step in perfectly. I think the fact that he's a Maynard guy is going to be helpful to us, to assure the public that, that we have a police department that understands our community. And, you know, we took a chance the last time, and we went outside, and I think it was the best thing Maynard ever did, for Mike, too.
I agree.
In developing his career and getting us to where we are. It was a difficult situation then, as you probably, I know you remember. And I think that we're the better for having done that because of how we've been able to develop, not only yourself, to prepare you to become our next chief, but to develop our department. And to echo Chris's comments relative to the accreditation, thank you so much for bringing that level of professionalism and pride to our police department that you bring, that you have brought and will bring. And so I am wholeheartedly in support of Mike Noble as the next chief.
Yeah, in a short period of time that I got to, to know you, I, just my perception is behind the scenes, you were the man that were doing, doing a lot of the hard work. So you're, you're going to hit the ground running, it should be no problem whatsoever. And Maynard is going to be lucky to have you as a, as a police chief, in my opinion.
I agree. I've, I've worked with you on a couple of search committees, and I also think that, I mean, your experience speaks for itself. You obviously are loyal to Maynard and, but you also know the way that we all want the department run. And, I mean, that's, I think, how you created your, how you helped create those policies. And so if you create the policies, then you know how it should be run. So, in general, I, I think that we are lucky to have you. So, I agree.
Thank you. Okay.
You want to say anything, like reject it?
I'm not going to disagree with any. I don't want to speak about all the officers in the room, but I can tell you right now that you look a lot better without the-
Yeah, 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 exactly.
Some of them it looks okay on, but- I will say, I think my wife is happier that I had the shave than me getting the police chief job.
And I'm sure you have probably the respect of your department from what I'm hearing. It's full respect and backing.
I'll, uh, replay Dave's sentiments, too, with, I'd like to thank Chief Dubois, and I've heard people wreck his name all the time. It's Dubois.
Is it Dubois?
Yeah. It's, uh, but he set up a, you know, way of leadership and a mentoring program and sent me and showed me and gave me the confidence, you know, he had the confidence in me to do that. That's why I think stepping into this role won't be as difficult, where if I didn't have that, it'd be a lot difficult. So I'd like to thank him, I'd like to thank the board for always supporting the police department, Greg's guidance, the department, beyond the department, plus my wife, she's my biggest supporter. You know, again, she liked the shave part. She does not like No Shave November, but it's, she knows it goes to a good charity. And, oh, my mom here, too. You know?
And your boys.
The boys are giving you a thumbs up, by the way.
My boys are my inspiration. They give me my motivation and my gray beard. All right, so it also, I think it also speaks volumes about where our police department is today, that we have, you know, guys that have left the department, are retired, they're here, people from other areas of town that are here. I don't think there's anybody here that was here for the tax classification hearing except for the five of us, Angie and, Angie and Steve. Words riveting. So, so it, it says a lot that everyone was willing to stick around an extra hour and a half to, um, to listen to what we're about to say and what we're about to do.
And your boys can fall asleep, that's good.
And I think this is a, I think that the step we're about to take is the right step, the best step, and the, the only step that Maynard could take tonight. So it is with great pleasure, and personally and professionally, that I make the motion to appoint Mike Noble as police chief, term as per charter and or agreements.
Second.
Alls in favor? All right. Before we go, we've got to take care of the business end of this, too. I also make a motion that we authorize Town Administrator Greg Johnson to negotiate an employment agreement on behalf of the board with the board's selected candidate for the position of police chief.
Second.
Second. All in favor? That I can vote on, so I did.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, we happen to have the town clerk available to do the-
Tom Clift is wearing it. Excellent.
Yeah, and then the penning, usually the chief organizes this, but I guess I got to do it for myself.
Do it yourself, yeah. You want a mirror?
I'll wait for them.
I'll give you a mirror if you want.
No, no. Organize it, I guess.
Raise your right hand. Please repeat after me. I, Michael Noble.
I, Michael Noble.
Do solemnly swear in the firm.
Do solemnly swear in the firm.
That I will faithfully and impartially-
That I will faithfully and impartially-
Discharge him of form.
Discharge him of form.
The duties incumbent upon me-
The duties incumbent upon me.
As the chief of police-
As the chief of police.
In the town of Maynard.
In the town of Maynard.
In good faith-
In good faith.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
I, Michael Noble-
I, Michael Noble.
Promise to uphold the constitution of the United States-
Promise to uphold the constitution of the United States.
The laws of the Commonwealth and Massachusetts.
The laws of the Commonwealth and Massachusetts.
And the bylaws of the town of Maynard.
And the bylaws of the town of Maynard.
So help me God.
So help me. Don't get shy now, you've been on camera. Don't hurt him.
You're going to stab him.
That's probably the best birthday gift of all, huh, Owen?
Don't stab him.
Want some help? Yeah, come here, Mike, I'll do it.
I know, be more.
Don't hurt him.
The chair's going to-
Come on.
Come on.
Come on.
Good job, bud.
Yeah. Don't hurt him.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's your best birthday present, but it's going to be the most unique.
That's right. You'll remember this for a long time.
We don't say happy birthday, just anyway.
We don't say, that's right, you're the first happy birthday, but we have had kazoo's.
We have, yeah.
It's going to bring like kazoo's.
Where's Mark when he's here?
All right.
Thank you.
All right, so-
Just a little more business, Mr. Chairman.
All that's left is the Green Community Report, right?
And then the Town Administrator's Report, yes.
So, okay. I want to, they're going to have cake over here, so if you want cakes, uh, so are we just accepting a report?
I'd like to have, uh, Justin, by, by my understanding, yes, we're accepting a report that he will submit on behalf of the town, but-
Good, how are you? Did you get that? Sorry, guys, couldn't hear you.
You're ignoring us.
Let me just do the, um, let me just, let me just, I'll just, there's an emotion attached to this, and it's, um, a motion to accept and approve the Green Community Annual Report.
Yes.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right. Okay, Justin, what are we, what are we, what are, what are we accepting? Do we have the report in the center of the packet already?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, well, yeah, go ahead. So, so annually, Maynard's been part of the Green Community since 2011. There has been a number of employees that are no longer here that have worked their way to establish this grant program and have been rewarded since 2011 in a number of factors. So annually, we have to provide a report to the Department of Energy, and this is just our yearly report summary. The reason that it was brought across is I don't have the authority to sign off on the execution of the report. I provided all the information per the report, and we're on path. The reason that we have to do this is so that we become eligible for next year's grant process, which we have been doing, again, since 2011. It's a great grant program. The town has been rewarded gracefully to the state. Actually, it was told to me that Maynard is one of the highest recipients of this grant process since its inception. So it's something that I'd like to continue to go, move forward and, and benefit from.
Okay. All right, so I guess we're just going to accept the report and move on.
Just so you know, there was a lot of people behind you that were listening to this.
Yeah. Just so you guys know, I'm going to have a little cake and beverages in the other room in the police department, so you're welcome to go after this. So, not to rush it, but all those in favor of the Green Community Report?
I have one quick question. First off, on the topic itself, I was on the board when we accepted and brought in the Green Communities Act, and I got to tell you, it was not something that was easy to
And then Town Administrator's Report, yes.
So, okay. I want to, they're gonna have cake over here, so if you want cake, so... So are we just accepting a report?
I'd like to have, uh, Justin, by the way, yes, by the way, it's a, yes, we're accepting the report that he will submit on behalf of the town clerk.
Sorry, guys, couldn't hear you.
Now you're ignoring us, we know.
Let me just do the, um, let me just, let me just, I'll just, there's an emotion attached to this and it's, um, a motion to accept and approve the Green Community Annual Report.
Yes.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right. Okay, Justin, what are we, what are we, what are, what are we accepting? Do we have the report in, in our packet already?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, well, yeah, go ahead. So, so annually, um, Maynard's been part of the Green Community since 2011. There has been a number of employees that are no longer here that have worked their way to establish, um, this grant program and have been rewarded since 2011 in a number of factors. So annually, we have to provide a report to, um, the Department of Energy and this is just our yearly, um, report summary. Um, the reason that it was brought across is I don't have the authority, um, to sign off on the execution of the report. Um, I provided all the information, um, per the report and we're on path. Um, the reason that we have to do this is so that we become eligible for next year's grant process, which we have been doing, again, since 2011. Um, it's a great grant program. Um, the town has been rewarded gracefully to the state. Actually was told to me that Maynard is one of the highest recipients of this grant process since its inception, so it's something that I'd like to continue to go, move forward and, um, and benefit from, so.
Okay. All right, so I guess we're just gonna accept the report and move on.
Just so you know, there was a lot of people behind you that were listening to this.
Just so you guys know, we're gonna have a little, um, cake and beverages in the other room in the police department, so you're welcome to go after this. Um, so not to rush it, but all those in favor of the Green Community Report?
I have one quick question.
Thanks, Justin.
Um, first off, on the topic itself, um, I was on the board when we accepted and, and brought in the Green Communities Act and I gotta tell you, it was not uh, something that was easy to do. There was a lot of consternation among, because certain aspects of it, people were saying, we're gonna expend money here, we're gonna lose money there, we're gonna do this. I'm very proud of the fact that I was with the group that led the charge to get it done.
Should be.
Um, but the other day, um, we got, maybe a couple of weeks ago, we got an email and I, I don't have it on my computer here, so excuse me for bringing up my, um, phone. Um, and I just wanted to get some clarification.
Yep.
If, um, if I can, it, it was the solar credits that Becky sent to us. Um, are you, are you familiar with the spreadsheet that we got on the solar credits?
Yes, yep.
The way I was reading it is that we were losing some money. Is that true?
Um, I can't a hundred percent confirm that 'cause I have to look with Kevin on some of the past numbers.
Figure it out.
It's unlikely, but we will look into it.
Yeah.
We, it is unlikely, but we will look into it. The, the credit system may, maybe we didn't receive as many credits.
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw a lot of red on there, you know, and I'm assuming that that meant we lost money.
It was because of too much sun.
No, just the opposite.
We're looking at the way you reallocated.
Of how the credits are moved around.
But we'll, we'll get a, we'll...
Okay, so I wasn't reading those spreadsheets wrong the way they were presented?
I don't know, that's what I'm saying. I, I would like time to, we'll go, we'll go back and look at it.
Okay.
All right. Anything else?
No, I have a related item for my comments at the end.
Okay. Town Administrator's Report looked wonderful this time.
Thanks, Josh, thanks, Justin.
Thank you, Justin.
Have a good night.
You too.
Look, I am outta here.
Uh, so, Mr. Chairman, not much to highlight specifically, although again, I always encourage the public to go online and read the, the whole Town Administrator's Report.
Oh, absolutely.
Um, uh, tomorrow, uh, the Fowler Middle School is hosting a Safe Routes to School Conference, which I think is, is actually a pretty big deal, so to speak. I said it quickly, Safe Routes to School Conference. I'm not entirely sure why, but it's great.
I can't make it, but it's, I have a dark point, but it's a lot of, it's all day, right?
It is, it's a big thing, yeah.
Yes, it is.
And it's actually, I've had, I've had people in other towns commend Maynard for hosting it, so I think it is a pretty big deal.
It is a big deal and I, and, uh, Maynard has always been a very pedestrian friendly and, and we will continue to try to work towards the end of, of having Safe Routes to School, which, whether it be crosswalks or crossing guards or, or proper sidewalks, it'll always be good. Uh, town hall is closed next Thursday and Friday in, in recognition of the, uh, the holiday. I'm just cruising down if there's anything else I wanna highlight now. Well, so, um, Assistant Town Minister Megan Smedel wanted to add about the preambulation.
Yep, it's been scheduled for December sixth.
December sixth?
Friday.
Explain really quick what that is and about...
You know what it is.
Oh, okay, comes up all the time.
Jack, did, did you make sure Jack McKean knows?
He knows, um...
Goodness.
And we're gonna do, we're gonna go out ahead of time to find them, so it'll be a, uh, smooth sailing, I think, on the sixth.
So it's not gonna be like a...
Is it gonna be in a minivan or what?
Yo, foot van.
If any, if people are interested in coming, I know Chris and Justine mentioned they're planning to attend. Uh, if we get more people, then we'll have to figure out...
What time you thinking about starting?
Transportation. Probably nine.
Um, a couple of things.
It's not that bad.
Uh, you may wanna notify the school, WAVM, last time, I think filmed some of it.
Oh, fun, okay, great.
And then showed it on TV and then also the Beacon.
Yeah, Holly, yeah.
Yep, okay.
Wanna know about it just for, you know, prosperity purposes.
Thank you.
Great.
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Um, okay, so I just have a couple of quick things. Uh, last night was the first meeting of Maynard's Human Relations Committee. Um, the committee met in this room. We picked the chair, two, a co-chair, two co-chairs. Um, and it's secret, they picked a secretary and, you know, um, so it was a good meeting where, you know, just kind of set the, the rules of what the meetings would be like and when, you know, when they would be spaced out and I think it, the consensus was like once a month. Um, there is some discussion.
The co-chairs.
Huh?
Who are the co-chairs?
It's Kate Fitzgerald and Rachel...
Rachel Tryba?
Tryba.
Tryba?
Yep.
T-R-Y-B-A.
And then the clerk is Elliot Crispin.
I'm not sure.
To be in your neighborhood.
Yeah.
T-R-Y-B-A, yes.
Yeah, is she, is she go to school with the kids? Your kids? She that age? I don't know how old she is. I don't know.
Not sure. Her resume was on the board's slip.
I don't know, but anyway, so that, that was, that went well, um, you know, good group. One of the, one of the conversations was that they're gonna look, um, at the, you know, go through the charge and kind of, some of it is kind of wonky and you just kind of look through it and, and Mike was in full agreement with just kind of going through it and maybe coming back to us with suggestions to, you know, re, reissue the charge, um, more in line with what, I think what we all think that it will be going forward as opposed to what it was when, um, the police chief first drafted it several, you know, a few years ago. So that was, that went well. Um, I guess a nice turn off of Veterans Day, we all, we all marched, that was nice. And then Armand and I met with Greg and Justin and the people from the, um, golf course one afternoon. Greg and Justin invited us up, um, 'cause we, you know, and we listened to that conversation and there's some items to discuss going forward and Greg could put in the packet, is it in the packet?
What, so what's that?
The packet about, or was it separate that we talked about the contract?
So the contract is, their initial length of the contract expires in December, at the end of this year, um, December thirty-first, twenty thousand nineteen. The contract does allow for two years' worth of renewals. So, yes, in, in either December third or the December seventeenth, um, I will put it on for the consideration of the board to renew their contract, terminate it, discuss it.
Okay, all right, so, yeah, it's coming up. But, um, other than that, that's all I have. Um, Justine?
Oh, you caught me off guard.
All right, next?
No, 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 I'm okay. Um, yeah, I actually don't have much. I met with, uh, I met with Jerry Beck today, um, over at ArtSpace and, uh, had a great conversation with him. He really, um, is excited about just being in town and engaging all different, different pockets of the community, um, in art and art space and, and things. So we kind of brainstormed about that for a little while. Um, and tomorrow I'm attending that Safe Routes to School, so that'll be, that'll be fun. And, uh, I think that's it.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, Armand?
Oh, I'm good.
Mr. Gavin?
Uh, yeah, I heard from, um, a gentleman who works for the federal government who, um, indicated that there are federal grants available for solar panels. This goes back to the discussion that I was talking about.
Great.
This, this, hm?
I'm sorry, I said great, go ahead.
Federal, it's not free.
No, I said great.
You know, so obviously, we, but we'd wanna hear about this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You may recall the high school when it was built, it was built with the anticipation that someday there would be solar panels added to the high school.
My understanding it is, does have the capability.
So the installation costs of any solar panels for the high school should be reduced as a result of having that preparation having been done.
Absolutely.
I've been told that the, uh, the grants are still available this year.
Oh.
And there will be, uh, additional grants available next year, although the amounts that will be available will be lower.
Okay.
But the grants are still available and, um, I was basically encouraged to get Maynard to look into it and apply sooner rather than later.
Okay.
Because it could be some savings for us, um, not only on the, on the budget side for, um, uh, you know, for energy costs.
Right.
But it also just adds to our green communities issue and we could potentially grab onto some green communities...
That'd be great.
Grant money as well to help subsidize the grant from the federal government. Um, I asked who specifically to reach out to. Um, they didn't have a name of an individual, but said in town Max Lamson, who used to be a member of the, uh, Planning Board and I think, um, he is supposed to have some really strong insight into what, uh, the application process might be all about. Okay?
I'm gonna do it.
All right. Any else? I just, um, to follow up on some of the comments made earlier and with David's back and forth with, um, Steve a little bit, I think we really need to look into how we get on the same page a little better next year.
I agree.
It's just, you know, that should have been a twenty minute presentation.
Yeah, I agree. I don't, I, yes, I agree, Mr. Chairman.
So, I mean, it is what it is.
Well, I, I commented to Greg before the meeting began, um, it was disappointing and it's not Greg, but it was disappointing that, um, 'cause last year we had had the discussion about when this comes up, we should have these documents well in advance of our meeting, not a Thursday before a weekend and I unfortunately was out of town for, for a portion of the weekend, so I lost that time, but that's me and that's fine. I had the opportunity yesterday and Sunday night to look at it, but this is one of the most important things that we do every year and to have just a limited amount of time to do it with limp, what I felt was somewhat limited information on some of the issues, it's just not fair to the residents.
Well, I think, I think it's one of those issues, um, this is me, but I think it's one of those issues that it really deserves time on a prior agenda.
Yes, and that was something I mentioned to Dave.
Then when we, then when we have, you know, Angie and whoever come in, then we, then we're, we're, we've kind of, we kind of have a background and we've kind of discussed it.
I agree.
And we know already where we're going.
That's an excellent point, 'cause Dave and I talked about the same thing.
But, I mean, I know that Angie gets crunched for time and whatnot, but if we, you know, if she needs help to get over that crunch, we'll get her help, but...
Yeah. That was the direction you gave me last year as well. I, I, I don't disagree and we'll, we'll do better.
And to their credit, there were, there were years where I sat here where that document that we got on Thursday would be handed to us as they were walking in the door for the hearing at seven twenty.
I was wondering why she had something printed out.
I think it was more than a couple of years ago, 'cause I get a couple that way.
And it would just be handed to us and without any prep time and, you know, here it is, you know, how are we supposed to act on something like that? So we've improved. Last year we were a week in advance and I was, I praised everybody for that and then here we are, this year back to, you know...
No, I, I understand.
Less than a day, but...
Yeah. I understand.
You know, we can do better, I think.
Yeah, all right. If that's it, I think we'll make a motion to adjourn and we'll all be back December third.
Yay.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Yeah, yes, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Safe travels for anybody traveling.
We did not agree to adjourn, but that's fine.
You should, yeah, you should adjourn.
All in favor of adjourn? We're adjourned. Thank you.
Now, the, uh, the individual...
Now, if anybody wants, they can go over and eat cake with Mike.